Good morning. We are going to call the August 5th, 2025 Scott County Board of Commissioners Meeting to Order. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I guess I didn't gavel in there. Now it's all official. I'm gonna look at item number two, amendments to the agenda. I did not see any. I'm looking. I don't see any. I saw the face there, but okay, so this will stand as distributed. Item number three, approve amendments of the July 22nd, 2025 board meeting, which were also distributed. Are there any changes, deletions?
Move of approval.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. We'll take one of those. Any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, minutes are approved. Item number four, new employees. We had six new employees. Come on up, make your way to the microphone. This is where you get to tell us who you are, what area you are in here at Scott County, maybe where you live, something about your family, a fun fact. You get to choose. You get to choose what all of our live stream viewers get to enjoy. So come on up. It's green, so you can just speak and you are good to go. Welcome. Welcome.
Hi, good morning. My name is Lamuno Oken. I'm a medical assistant at a jail. I'm a mother of three. This is my second, second month. Yes.
You're the wily veteran of the group. Thank you. Welcome. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Schoenwald. I'm working for the county attorney's office as the new crime and drug prevention coordinator, so organizing the Choose Not to Use golf tournament. I previously worked here from 2018 to 2022, and then I had our first stunt. So then I took a job closer to home, but really happy to be back. My family and I live in New Prague.
Welcome. And Choose Not to Use, I feel like that might be coming up real soon.
Real soon.
It is, so hopefully you've got your... You gotta go green. You gotta go green.
Yes, it's coming up very soon, and hopefully you have your team ready or you volunteered. Jessica, are there still openings available?
For golfers, we're maybe one team.
Oh, you don't want me golfing.
But if volunteers, for sure.
Right, that's a good word. That's a good word. Thank you.
Thank you.
And a date again, Jessica?
August 26th, three weeks from today.
Love it. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lindsay Fiedler-Schill. I'm the youth residential services manager at the Juvenile Alternative Facility in Jordan. This is week four for me. Really excited to be here, so thank you. I come from the state, from the Minnesota Competency Atainment Board. Prior to that, I was the director of intensive mental health programs at Lorenz Clinic, a clinic system in the Twin Cities. And before that, I was a therapist and leader at Prairie Care, primarily working in an inpatient psychiatric hospital in Brooklyn Park. My husband and I live in Chaska, and we have three young children, an eight-year-old, a four-year-old, and a one-year-old, so I don't have a life outside of them and their activities, running them around. But that's fun. I'm originally from Wisconsin, and we've lived in Carver County since 2013.
Great. Welcome. Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name's Noah Jensen. I'm the county survey assistant. I mainly work in the office, but I sometimes go out in the field and help them with whatever they need. Been here for a little over two months, and it's been amazing so far.
Great.
Thank you.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Hi, I'm Emily Lundine. I am with the coordinated response team with adult mental health, and it's very fun and exciting, so I'm happy to be here. I have a human family, but I mainly talk about my canine family, so I have three very large dogs that if you get me engaged in conversation about them, I will talk to you for hours, because they are delightful and I have so many stories. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Michael Bergstrom. I am the community engagement manager. I have lived in Scott County for the last 25 years, so half of that time in Savage and the other half in Prior Lake. I've had experiences in manufacturing technology companies and also a stint in ministry for a period of time, and extremely excited to work in the county that I've enjoyed living in for so long, so thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. New hires, new employees. Thank you so much. And now it looks like your tour guide is there waiting to take you on a tour of all things Scott County. Yes, so welcome, welcome. Thank you so much. Okay, now we're gonna move on to, excuse me, item number five, recognition of interested citizens. This is an opportunity for anyone to come and speak to the board about anything that is not on the agenda. I am looking around and not seeing anyone rush to the podium. So we will move on to the consent agenda. These are 10 items today. Yes, 10 items that will all pass in one motion. 6.1, adopt resolution number 2025-150 authorizing entering into an agreement with the Metropolitan Council for Dial-A-Ride Services in Scott and Carver Counties. 6.2, adopt resolution number 2025-173 authorizing entering into an agreement with Transit Team, Inc. for Transit Link Dial-A-Ride Services. 6.3, adopt resolution number 2025-189 authorizing entering into a Veterans Treatment Court Cooperative Agreement with the State of Minnesota. 6.4, adopt resolution number 2025-190 approving the precious metals license for Premier Gold Silver and Coin Association, LLC. 6.5, adopt resolution number 2025-192 authorizing entering a joint powers agreement and future amendments with State of Minnesota Department of Corrections Work Release Unit. 6.6, adopt resolution number 2025-194 approving the precious metal dealer license for Excel Pawn and Jewelry in Shakopee. 6.7, adopt resolution number 2025-198 approving a two-day temporary on-sale liquor license for the parish of Saints Jokum and Anne in Louisville Township. 6.8, approve appointment of citizen to an advisory committee. 6.9, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. 6.10, approve modification to the 2025 board meeting schedule. Those, folks, are the 10 items on consent.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the 10 items under consent? Excuse me. Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, consent passes. Moving on to item number 7.1, to receive a financial update for Q2 2025. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, commissioners. I'm here today to go through the second quarter fiscal update, and conservatively looking at our second quarter results, we are projecting a small favorable variance at the end of the year of $175,000. We have three large areas that really stand out within the organization. At this time, Health and Human Services is projecting a million-dollar unfavorable variance in their revenue with Min choices, but they really believe that with cost-cutting measures, that they will come in close to budget at the end of the year. That includes some savings in their client expenses, and then also savings in vacancies that they have within their area. We show it conservatively for the million, but they are really trying hard to come in at budget. The next largest area is our countywide impacts. We're showing a $750,000 favorable variance in this area. This is largely due to our investment earnings. Interest rates have been staying at their current levels, and at this point, we're looking at $750,000 favorable variance, not knowing there's beginning to be, well, there's a lot of pressure to bring down the interest rates, but at this time, we still have two more months past the second quarter of these rates. The next area, planning resource management, we're projecting a favorable variance of $500,000. This is primarily due to environmental services and setting aside $500,000 for the regional household hazardous waste facility. And then the next largest is the sheriff's office. We have a $200,000 negative variance. This is related to jail overtime, and the sheriff's office is looking through their operations to see what savings they can achieve to bring that down. One thing that has gone away is, you'll recall back in 2024, we had boarding of inmates from other areas that those contracts have gone away, so we don't have the revenue to offset it at this time. Any questions on the forecast there? All right, the next area I'd like to go through are our investments. First, we look at what our current holdings are. At the end of June, we had 88% of our money within the short-term zero to two years, and then smaller amounts within the three to five years, and then long-term. Again, we're taking advantage of the short-term interest rates at this time, so that's why you see the vast majority of our funds in those short-term investment areas. Now, on the right side, it shows where our money is. Since we are primarily short-term in our investments, we do have a lot of our funds within the money market, commercial paper, and then also CDs. So as we're taking advantage of the rates, we're keeping it in the most secure investments that we have. Moving on to the U.S. Treasuries, oh, sorry, looking at the yield curve, what we show here is what the yield curve was 10 years ago in with the yellow line. The gray line represents what the yield curve was after the first quarter, and then the black line is the yield curve as of the second quarter. So between the first and second quarter, the short-term rates stayed flat. The medium term, between two years and five years, slightly decreased, and then the long-term rates between 20 and 30 years, there was a slight uptick. But otherwise, overall, pretty relatively small changes. And then when you look at our historic rates, this is the six-month U.S. Treasuries, between the first quarter and second quarter, the rates have stayed pretty much the same. There's been really no movement in that three-month timeframe. And then on the last chart, looking at the 10-year U.S. Treasury rates, there's more volatility. It's moved up and down, but comparing the end of the first quarter to the end of the second quarter, it's almost the exact same rate. So a little more volatility, but again, stayed at the same, at the same rate. There are, you know, more pressures to bring the interest rates down, so I don't know how much longer we'll be able to keep earning the investments that we are with our funds, but at this time, we are getting good returns. Are there any questions? All right, well, well, thank you.
Thank you so much. Getting choked up over it. All right, we're gonna move on to item number 7.2, receive a transportation sales tax update.
Hi.
Good morning.
Lisa Freeze, Transportation Services Director, and I'm here this morning to give you a brief update, status update on the transportation sales tax program. I'm gonna cover a brief program history, gonna talk about the various projects and their status, and then talk a little bit about the budget and the projected cash flow in the program overall. Back in May of 2015, the county board adopted the sales tax program originally. This was made possible by a change in the state law that allowed counties to adopt a half-percent sales tax and a use tax if you were not in CTIB. And as you will recall, the landscape changed quite dramatically after Scott County did this. CTIB dissolved, and now all of the metro counties have their own sales tax. For Scott County, when we adopted it, we adopted it with some goals in mind. We wanted to focus in on mobility and safety projects. We wanted to leverage outside funding, namely grants at the federal and state level. We want it to align with MnDOT's program, and we wanted to make sure that our local partners, the cities, had abilities to fund some of the local pieces of those projects, namely things like storm sewer, sanitary sewer, some of their utilities that they would have to bring along with the various projects. And then we also wanted it to be consistent with, in particular, our transit plan, where we made transit investments. So we've had a number of projects.
Lisa, if I could ask you, looking at these projects, if you could just comment on the, how we uniquely use this tax, different than, say, some other counties. You don't have to name other counties, but what was it, how did we stand out as being a little bit different, do you think?
I think the key difference is that we were the first one out of the chute, and as a result of it, we looked at what our needs are. And what was happening is that the state was not making investments in the state system in Scott County, and we were trying to find a way to bring them to the table by having this money to leverage. One of the first projects we actually funded with the sales tax is that 41 and 169 project that was not in MnDOT's 10-year or 20-year, I think it was starting to emerge in their 20-year program when we embarked on that project. It was a $72 million project, and for us, if we would not have had the sales tax, it would have been eight to 10 years, well, probably more like four or five years of our regular program, just going to that project to get it moving. So our focus, unlike some of the counties since then, was to focus on bringing MnDOT to those regional investments, which were the projects that our community really was asking us to try to work with MnDOT to get done. In many of the other counties, some of them are using them for regional projects, but a lot of their investment has been focused on making their own program operate faster. And in some cases, I think like Dakota County focused a lot of the sales tax investment on the regional trail system. So everybody had a little different take once they did get around to adopting them, and plus there were tails of CTIB for some of the counties that did have transitway projects that they were using that sales tax to continue to pay until the law laws changed in 2023. So with that, we'll go back to the projects that we have done with it, and I will admit, I noticed this morning, I actually, we've completed actually 10 projects. There's only nine projects on here. The first project that we did was down in Belle Plaine. They led an overpass project on 169 at Commerce Drive, and we helped to fund that project along with MnDOT and the city. So thus far, we've, we've got 10 projects that are what I would call complete or underway. Five of them are fully complete. The bottom ones, starting with the 14 overpass, we're still working on one final right-of-way transaction that needs to get completed, and hopefully that will get completed this year. We are working on closeout on Trunk Highway 13 and Dakota Avenue with MnDOT. That was a MnDOT-led project, and so we anticipate we'll have those final costs here shortly. Then there were three projects that we were involved with over the past four or five years on 169 that we either led or were deeply involved with. 59 interchange, we had the ribbon cutting about a month ago now. The 169 and Bluff Drive quadrant interchange up in Sand Creek Township, and that project is nearing completion, and we have a ribbon cutting scheduled for that later this month. And then the 282 and 9, County Road 9 interchange in Jordan, which was this kind of probably our biggest project yet. I haven't had a chance to go back and like look at inflation on the 41 and 169 project, but those were our two biggest projects to date using that sales tax money. We also have funded a number of transit items with the sales tax. We purchased two buses for MVTA. We have done operating subsidy for that particular route on 169, and then as I retooled it when it was not successful, we continued to pay operating subsidy to match a federal grant that they got. We've used it for Hopscot operating and capital replacement funding. We've used it for expanded and weekend dial-a-ride services, the park-and-ride maintenances. We used it for software purchases. And we also did something that we call Last Mile Connection by building that pedestrian bridge on County Road 17 over 169 on the west side of the bridge, which feeds into the Marshall Road Transit Station.
Yeah, yeah.
Got a question here. One more comment here. You know, whenever we do a groundbreaking or ribbon cutting, it's always sort of shocking to me how lightly staff get mentioned as thank you for the work that was done. And I, you know, these without Lisa and her team, and obviously she had the tools of the sales tax, but it's a tremendous amount of work cobbling together different funding sources, doing applications to the Transportation Advisory Board and so forth. It, you know, without that team and Lisa's leadership of it, we wouldn't be looking at such a successful program of work.
Agreed.
So thank you so much.
Good word.
Well, we do take a lot of risks, but this fund does enable us to do that for you, and I think with it, we've been really successful. We've also done a number of preparatory studies. As you can see, those studies have led to projects on 169, and we're hoping that the work that we did on County Road 2 and I-35 down in Elko New Market will lead to a project here shortly, too. So those studies were important things for us to get layout work done, get MnDOT buy-in on what we are building and things of that nature. I think, speaking to Commissioner Ulrich's point, we have been very successful with leveraging state and federal investment using the sales tax. I think there was a challenge when we passed the first round of the sales tax, that you wanted us to achieve 35% leverage, or leverage only spend sales tax on 35% of the project. I think we came pretty close. We've been finding this environment pretty tough, because getting grants at the regional level has become more difficult for the county, given changes in policy by the TAB. And as always, competing for these federal funds has become more popular, so we have more competitors than we did initially when we started. But I think overall, we've leveraged $2 of state and federal investment for every dollar that we invested of the sales tax on 169 projects. And you could do a similar pie chart for all the projects that we have done. It's always leveraged other investment grant money and MnDOT contributions. In 2022, the sales tax was In 2022, the sales tax was supposed to come to an end in, after it had been in place for 10 years. So it was adopted in 2015, so 2025 would have been the end of the sales tax. We knew we weren't quite done with the 50 years' worth of projects that we had on that first map, so we worked with the county board to refine and approve a new map of program of projects, and that was adopted by the board in 2022. And it went, extended the sales tax out to 2032. And at that time, I think all of you were on the board at that time, but at that time, oh, Commissioner Brennan was not, but at that time, the board's direction was focused on finishing those regional projects that we had initiated on 169, 13, and 35. But you really wanted us to start to look at those principal arterials on the county system, our future principal arterial system, namely County Road 78, or County Road 17, County Road 78, and County Road 8, and see if we could make investments in them. And so that's what we did. And they also wanted to continue to support expanded dial-a-ride, volunteer service program, the Hopscot program, and the park-and-ride maintenance. So as of right now, this is our list of projects. Maybe I'll just jump over to transit and say that in 2023, when the state legislature passed the regional sales tax and created what is known as the Transportation Alternative Account, 17% of those funds that come to the county need to be spent either on transit or complete streets types of projects. So we moved all of our transit-related investments from the sales tax to that particular program. I think the reason I want to point that out is we all know what happened last year in the legislature, and so that continues to be at risk. And if something were to happen to that money, and it would get reduced, or it would no longer have transit as an eligible item, we would need to maybe reconsider this in the future, how we handle some of those transit costs. But for now, we're programming all of the transit-related items out of the Transportation Alternative Account. So with highway program, we have several projects remaining. We're working alongside Savage on the Quentin Avenue project that involves replacing those railroad bridges and getting that roadway connected from McCall Avenue down to Trunk Highway 13. We are hoping to get that project completed prior to the Big Corridors of Commerce project. It's looking a little doubtful that that will happen, but we still have it in our 2027 program, waiting the outcome of their negotiations with Canadian Pacific Railroad. We also have in '27, the County Road 17 Improvement Project that will include the intersections of 1482 and County Road 12. We're, we have County Road 12 listed as a separate roundabout project on 17, but they're really, hopefully, going to be done as one project. And will include supporting roadways and trails on both sides of the road, including regional trail connections. Also in 2027, MnDOT is planning to move forward in the fall with the Corridors of Commerce project. And so we need to be prepared to provide our commitment to that project in that timeframe. At this point, you're probably aware, there are some funding gaps on that project. We're, we're working hard. We've got two grant applications that we're applying for. Burnsville's been applying for grants, so hopefully we can decrease that gap and then get MnDOT to come alongside us with that money. So we're still pretty positive that that's all going to happen as one complete project. Then we also have our County Road 8 Extension Project, the first phase, which would go from 21 to County Road 59 in 2031, and then the second phase, which would go from County Road 59 into downtown Belle Plaine and connect into the interchange. That one is set for 2033. I think we would have liked to have changed the order, but the mining operations there are a little behind, and that's why we set them up that way. We're going to begin refreshing that preliminary design that was done back in the early 2000s and start public engagement, probably in earnest next year. We'll get a contract underway yet this year to start that work, because it's going to be a big, heavy lift. We also are working with the City of Elko New Market. We've helped them with a couple of grant applications using sales tax funds, and we're hoping, we're hoping that MnDOT will program the replacement of the bridge in that 2031 timeframe. So we're starting to try to see if we can get other funding to go along with it. Another project that's in the program is the Minnesota River Crossing Study, and we've been working with MnDOT on that to look at County Road 9, County Road 11, Trunk Highway 41, Trunk Highway 25, and the flooding issues there to see if there's another project that we can bring forward on that. So with the sales tax, it's been a pretty steady upward increase. I think when we originally started this, it started out that we were assuming $6 million, but it's been above $10 million for a number of years. It peaked out in 2023 at a high of 15, and then last year's revenues were 13.1 million. In our budget, we use a conservative forecast of 12 million. So if we get an extra million or two each year, we might be able to use more of that on that County Road 8 project, because quite a bit of that funding is coming from our state aid program. So I think we have a plan for it. If we get more money, we could also maybe do something additionally on one of the other projects if we're able to get more funding before the end. And this graph, pretty much, we were supposed to start, or we started having to do a state report in 2019, hence why I started it in 2019, because that's when our last year's report was required us to go back to. So the kind of goldenrod line on the top is our balance of the fund, the sales tax fund. The kind of orange line on the bottom is our actual annual sales tax receipts, and you can see how we peaked out in that '22, '23 timeframe, and now our revenue assumption is a little lower than our revenues last year, and we'll update that each year. And then what you see in the middle is our projected spending. And in that '24, '25 timeframe, it really included some of the 169 project right-of-way, and then our interchanges that we led on 169 in that cash flow as you see it, and then the 282 project. And then the upcoming peak is our County Road 17 project and Trunk Highway 13 project. And then we have to save some money again in order to be able to do that County Road 8 project. So what you see is that by 2033, we will have booked all of our revenues, and shortly thereafter, we'll probably zero out that fund unless there's discussion about need to renew it for some reason. So that's what I have for you today, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you so much, Lisa. Appreciate that and all the work that goes into, there's always these little funding gaps, right? Not so little sometimes, and trying to figure that puzzle out to fill those gaps with all of these funds. I know a lot of grant applications, a lot of cobbling together, as it was mentioned.
Yeah, and, and I think over the years, you know, we've, our partner MnDOT, sometimes they come slower than we want, but ultimately, they do come with a little more money, and they continue to have good discussions with us on these other projects. So I, I know it's never easy to get to the full funding on a project. So thanks for your support on this program.
Lisa, that County Road 8, do you think that's actually likely going to happen? Like, if you said, if you had a crystal ball in 10 years, because people have lost seats on this board because of that road, am I right? Yeah, Ralph Molster, right?
So I'm just saying, is that likely to really go through?
Well, that is the plan, and we've done.
I know, I know.
You know, we've done some updating. I think, you know, some of your partners are really looking forward to that project. The City of Belle Plaine sees that as a good opportunity. And that project does have a lot of regional benefit to it, because what we essentially are able to do is get, get people over to I-35 more effectively if you're on the south end of the county and you want to get to 35, and it ties in with the efforts that Dakota County has going on, County Road 70. So I think that although it's a heavy lift, and it will be a lot of work and a lot of handholding with the community members that it's going to impact, it, it will definitely be something that our staff will be working very hard on to get done.
So Lisa, two things on that. Part of it over by Belle Plaine will be graded out as part of the mine. And then the other thing is, this has a huge impact on 13 as well, doesn't it?
It does. And if you look at when we did our work regarding the last comprehensive plan, we did a build-no-bill look at that, and it, it helps reduce, believe it or not, congestion on Trunk Highway 13 and Savage, which, you know, there isn't much room for additional growth there in terms of traffic. It helps, it helps reduce growth of traffic on County Road 42 as well. So it's a key element of our system. It's a major gap, and I think without it, the county will not be served as well on their transportation system. So I, it's, it's a key, it's a key link in our system that needs to get built.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Lisa. I just want to, yeah, great presentation, want to echo what Commissioner Ulrich said. I think you and your team and our administration has done so much thoughtful work about this. So a couple of things. One, this is primarily for my colleagues, because I've already been in conversation with Lisa and Leslie a bit, but I'll be going to DC as part of Transportation Alliance in September to really, I think the direction from them to me will be to really focus on those Highway 13 funding gaps, and if there's any federal support we can, we can get from that. So that will be great. County Road 8, I just, yeah, I think you're right, Commissioner Wolf, that's been a long time, and there's a lot of different thoughts about it. But I would, as we get a little closer to that, you know, relook, refreshing the design and all that, I, I hope you utilize us so we can be talking with people about it, because it is hard, those projects that impact the communities, they're the long-term, many-decade, half a century impact, is, is we're looking forward a long ways. And sometimes that's hard if you've lived there on that road for 80 years, to have that vision about what the next half a century is going to look like. So we should probably be involved and be talking to folks about that, too. And then just the other thing I wanted to give everyone credit for is, talked a lot about the braiding of funding sources and all of that, but, and working with MnDOT, but working with all the local jurisdictions, who sometimes, very rightly so, have different visions, and we do different priorities in trying to make sure we, we can come together on that. So I just think that that is, is part of this work, too, and, and thank you for that.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Okay, we are going to move on to item number eight, committee reports and commissioner updates. I will look down to my right, Commissioner Wackman-Brecke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, our last board meeting was July 22nd. We attended, we had a workshop after that board meeting, and then we had the exciting ribbon cutting that same day on Highway 169 Delaware Avenue Bridge, opened just in time for the county fair. Heard, have heard great things about that interchange and its, its operability. So that was fun. Also, on July 22nd, I had a meeting with our old friend Danielle Fox, who's now Executive Director at Mount Olivet Rolling Acres, just touching base about some of our joint work. July 23rd was Scott County Fair opening breakfast. The Malika family from Cedar Lake Township was recognized as the Scott County Farm Family of the Year. Hopefully, we'll have them here at a board meeting to recognize them also. Also, July 23rd, I had the state community supervision advisory committee meeting. 24th and 25th, I worked the Scott County Fair booth. Good talking with folks. You know, if there were some themes, I think some of it had to do with, with our display, a lot of interest in recycling and household hazardous waste, questions about, you know, why we don't take mattresses, things like that. Also, probably the second most amount of questions I received at the fair was folks asking about government fraud and how that impacts the county, how we're making sure that, you know, as they see the headlines, and I told that to Leslie, just as a thought for maybe seen article, residence report, something like that, that that's on people's mind as they're seeing the statewide things. So that's not what I was thinking was going to be the big topic, but that's what people were talking to me about. Then on July 28th, had AMC Executive Committee meeting, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 22nd, the ribbon cutting, also had my monthly administrator meeting, and Prior Lake had a workshop and a meeting that evening. On the 23rd, the fair had their ribbon, or not ribbon, but just their breakfast and opening deal there, and then rushed over to the mosquito control. There's a couple, I think, is it West Nile virus or something that's kind of coming along here, there are a few spots, so that's something to look for. The Vermillion River Joint Powers Meeting met after that. And then last night, Credit River met. They signed an agreement with Scott County on the trails. There was one member who thought that they should be paid for by Scott County, because it's a county trail, but that was a 4-1 vote. And then met with Joe Widda and Tony Winicki out by Bernard and 27. There's putting in a turn lane, and some folks that live out that way have a little bit of a issue with, they took down some trees. And then actually, last Monday night, there was a windstorm and blew down a set of trees inside that, and they think we should pay for those. And actually, in my opinion, most of those trees should have been taken down a few years ago, because most of them are dead. And then Cedar Lake had their meeting, monthly meeting last night, and they also brought up government fraud last night, ironically. So, yeah, that was coincidental. So anyhow, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Brennan.
Thank you. On July 22nd, I attended the ribbon cutting at 16959. I also went to the Mental Health LAC meeting, and they discussed the FRC, Family Resource Center, and Together We Can, and work that they're doing. So July 23rd, I attended the AMC Solid Waste Working Group Committee. We toured the waste management facility in Minneapolis, and then went to DemCon in Dakota Prairie to see the work that they're doing. And we also had a discussion regarding SCORE and SCORE funding, and I think that's going to be an ongoing conversation at the next meeting in August. July 25th, I went to the Scott County Fair, and I agree with our, that there was a lot of conversations regarding the appreciation for the hazardous waste facility, household hazardous waste facility, and people really like their reuse room. You know, people go by, they'll go get paint, and then they paint their house every year. I heard the story about this, this being done. July 28th was the WMO WPC meeting. July 30th, I had a meeting with Leslie Vermillion and Brad Davis regarding the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District. July 30th, I sat in at the MBTA meeting. August 4th, yesterday, was the AMC Transportation meeting, and Commissioner Ulrich can fill me in, fill in anything that I'm missing, but we had a conversation regarding greenhouse gas and the complexities of that legislation and how it will be difficult to, to work with. and how it will be difficult to, to work with. And I don't know if I can fill you in if I missed anything else. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ulrich.
The 22nd, I attended the ribbon cutting for 59 169. The 23rd, the fair breakfast. And then that same day, I had a shift at the, at the fair, and we talked about the rain. It was thunderous rain during my, most of my entire shift. The, the metal roof.
Oh, yeah.
You couldn't hear people, you know, sitting next to you, talking or standing next to you. It was really kind of amazing. So I didn't get as much feedback as you others did. 29th, the chair, vice chair. 30th, the MBTA board meeting. The 4th, the AMC District 10 Transportation Discussion. Yeah, we're, they're talking about greenhouse gas and the legislation potentially related to that, and how that would hamper expansion projects and, you know, the requirements of dealing with greenhouse gas. There's sort of a wild card. I'm trying to understand how the recent changes federally with the EPA is not going to apparently enforce CO2 as a greenhouse gas. So I, I, so I ask questions related to that. How, what's the implications, changes federally to the state? And particularly if a federal project, if it comes through the TAP processes or federal projects, those, all projects, you know, need to get put in the state transportation improvement plan. And I just wondered if, if there's going to be something, if there's differences with federal versus state, as that question. You know, and I, a related topic, but I'm not, not linked completely that I want to, I've always wanted to talk about is these BRTs. You know, some would say, we're doing all these BRTs because of greenhouse gas and want to deal with transit issues or transportation and deal with greenhouse gas through extensive BRT network. Well, I'm critical of that, because I would say these transportation corridors, transit corridors in heavily urban areas have been transporting people in, in high numbers since I was a teenager. And they take, you know, 50, 75, or whatever the million dollars is, and turn that, that heavily used corridor into a BRT. And I'm wondering, I asked again after the meeting, get me the data on the before and after. What, okay, you had this heavily used corridor, then you spent X amount of dollars. Did you increase the capacity? Was it worth the investment? Because I, I think people are in love with the idea of a complete BRT network, whether it's related to greenhouse gas or not. They just, they want that network, and whether it makes sense or not. And, you know, there's some places, I'm sure it makes great sense. Others, these arterial, or highway arteries, excuse me, that are not well performing, that don't make sense. And, and I think we're on the cusp of great change with autonomous vehicles, both for individuals, but also I, you know, they're going to have autonomous small buses operating in the future, you know, that are like the ones that we have now, just came into service within the last year or two with MBTA. They're about eight or 10 passenger. Someday, those are going to be autonomous, and AI is going to plot the, the course for the most effective to pick up, you know, groups of people or individuals. And those are going to go all over the place. And I'm wondering if we're building some dinosaurs with these. And I know that's kind of your phrase there, Mr. Beard, Beer, excuse me. I had breakfast with him yesterday, Commissioner Beer. But anyhow, so that's my concern. There's, you know, where we're at in this whole category. Then I attended the Mobility Management Board meeting the same day, and then the new employee welcome this morning, which I always, I kind of love that. I, greeting the new employees. And, and one thing I like to say, and I've been told over the years, maybe you shouldn't say that so much, is that we're a family. We want to kind of encourage each other, spur each other on like a family. And so if there's something that's not working right in somewhere in the county, we would like to know, and we want to make this a happy place to work. We believe that a happy employee serves the public well. An unhappy employee doesn't probably. And so we, that's kind of one of the messages I, I shared with the employees, that if you have an idea or a suggestion, tell us. That's the end of my report.
Great.
Can I add something?
Yes, please.
On a personal basis, a, a personal, I, I drove around the roundabout on County Road 78 and 79. It's great. I, I take that roundabout or that intersection a lot when I'm going from my home to south on Southern Scott County, and I, and I want to bypass all the stoplights on Marshall Road. So it's a great roundabout. So really appreciate the work that the staff did on that.
It's good work. I gotta check that out. Yep. Okay, 7:22 post-board workshop that we've talked about, the ribbon cutting on 59. So nice to have that fair access and have open for those businesses. Thank you for your patience as we were building, getting that built for safety. So go visit those businesses. Later that night, Prior Lake City Council, as we talked about, 23rd fair breakfast. And we did have to rush out to MMCD. I heard there was a fantastic speaker we maybe missed or didn't miss, or a speaker anyway. Long speaker, okay, we missed that. Yeah, so we missed, had to run to MMCD. On the 24th, I wrote this down, I did not get a, a spot at the fair booth, but I did get a spot at the tractor pole. First time I've been to that, that tractor pole with my son and grandson. So it was Scott County Fair, five best days of summer. See you next year. 7:29, chair, vice chair. Then also after that, I had a meeting with the highway folks, just getting some updates. I think that was also a back-to-school fundraiser that day here from the employee association. Thanks for doing that. And this morning, new employee interviews, which was not interviews, but yes.
Oh, I think you're missing something.
What did I miss?
Don't you want to throw like the gauntlet down, the challenge to people to, to come today?
Well, I, listen.
1:30, is it?
Yes, yes, 1:30.
It's 1:00.
1:30.
It's 1:00.
Yeah, I suppose that's a, that's a future.
Throw the ball to get him in the dunk tank. Do you want to bring 20 pounds of ice to throw in there ahead of time?
Bring the ice. Bring it, please, please, yes. I'm, I think I'm on at 1. When, are, are you, are you on the dunk tank?
No, no, I'm not. I, I think you were the only board member, though, that volunteered, maybe.
As I look down to my left, all I see is Leslie doing this all, all morning, just warming up, warming up that arm, just like.
Actually, she's left-handed.
Well, either way, either way, I'll, I, she, she was doing both. I, I don't know, I hopefully, hopefully, yes, I am on at 1. And, and yes, as many times as I go in that drink, whether it's ice cold or not, I'll, I'll bring the ice. Yes, there's going to be some amount of extra going to Portage of Hope or Hope's Portage for every time I go in the drink. So come, come early, come often. Yeah, it's set up, it's cold, it's ready to go. So bring ice and bring your dollars and bring the, bring the baseballs or softballs, or if somebody said basketballs. Yeah, somebody said basketballs. So I will see you in the dunk tank, and I, I cannot wait. I look forward to that. So yes, so we'll, we'll give a report, a full report on that next week. Item number nine, county administrator update.
So we quite often talk about challenging the status quo and looking for ways to be more efficient. And the board had given direction to send a letter to the lower men. Commissioner Brennan brought this up, but she has really been working hard on this. They denied our request to go to 5 with Scott having 2 and changing, but they would go to 6, which would be the even vote and additional cost, which we kind of objected to. If we would discontinue the discussion on changing the boundaries or allowing some of us out. So we have a concern about a meeting they held recently, which we're going to follow up with. Commissioner Brennan has worked with Carver County. We have an upcoming meeting with Dakota County on some concerns, even I think on some of the taxing. And again, the ability here for a small agency, why couldn't it be incorporated and become more efficient in the overall management of the water system? So we're going to continue to work on that and challenge that discussion. Brad's working on it. And again, we have a couple upcoming meetings with our neighbors on that. I was going to raise the Hope's Portage, and I wanted to thank facilities. This idea came from Brian and Troy, and those guys do a wonderful job, one, of taking care of our facilities and planning and the maintenance, but also bringing a little fun to the workplace. They also did this for a charity, which is near and dear to all of our hearts, which is Hope's Portage, which the county board, and this is where HHS braided some funds together to put together a homeless transitional for folks that are experiencing some homelessness to transition back into housing, which one of our churches or faith communities have picked up and is very engaged in. It's been very positive and right out of your values about collaboration and working together. And so that has been very positive. So the other thing, highway, it's been, it'll be 25 years. In 2002, this board adopted the 169 corridor study. So when you talk about effort and commitment and vision, I think 9 will be done, right, in 2027? It'll been 25 years to complete that vision, but nine interchanges in Scott County will have been built. And again, not all of them have been easy and braided. And I sit here and I look at, as frustrating as MINDOT can be, some of their commitments to get 19 and 6 and some of these done. We went through a municipal consent hearing in Belle Plaine. And I think today, if you ask them, that interchange, the way it was built, ended up with a lot of development around it on that side, and very positive development for that community. The sales tax has leveraged several of them. But it'll be a 25 commitment, year commitment this board and scale made to focusing on that corridor and getting it done. So again, having plans in place, working the plan, making some adjustments, we can do lots of really, really good things for this community. And I think her presentation today shows that was a board decision, right? You made that decision to take the sales tax and do something very positive for the entire region and the county. So pretty proud of that, and, and nice work, Lisa, and to the highway staff, the planning staff for getting all of that done. The other good news is, the HHW received its grant from the MPCA. There had been a question about that, but I think the efforts of the board, and especially, we have to thank the Dakota County Board, I think Mike Slavik, was especially on this issue. And our legislative delegation, we received the good news that those funds are coming to the joint Dakota-Scott Household Hazardous Waste. So we'll get a little bit of an update on that today as well. But lots of positive news going on and working on here in the county.
Great, thank you so much. Looking down to my right, county attorney.
We do not need to meet.
Love it, love it. All right, before we adjourn, we are going to, after this meeting, going to our ERP update, a workshop setting, scale legislative priorities, and talk more about the Dakota-Scott HHW. So with that, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.